Also be differentiating this completely different conversation between elementary and then high school. And so, just so everyone is aware, TAM teaches at the university level, which certainly would correlate much closer to high school learning than to first grade learning, where teachers never, almost never get up in front of the class and teach to them. So I think it's a valuable conversation. It's just really difficult to do in this setting because of those differences. So I would just encourage those conversations to continue within the work group, the age-appropriate work groups, the learning forward groups, elementary, middle, and high school, because they're tremendously valued. But it's tough to have in this, I'm getting confused, and I think I have a pretty good handle on what's happening everywhere. So I just don't want parents to be worried about this conversation than being relevant to one age group but not another. So looking at the time, I want to be able to move through all the questions. David, it is, you're up.
Sure. I just want to say thank you for offering the MyOnline/ALE environment as well. I appreciate some of the challenges with it. I have heard parents who want to have their own cohorts that learn together. MyOnline would provide curriculum for those cohorts that do it in their own little bubble setting outside of school perhaps. So that is one option. Another option is there are parents who are thinking of doing private tutoring and need curriculum, and MyOnline might also help in that circumstance too as for curriculum. So there seem to be a lot of different choices here for that. So, but I think that that is fairly independent and hopefully does not take a lot of bandwidth from the school staff in terms of offering, you know, our core learning environment to our students, and that's the red, orange, yellow, green model. I will say that I would be, I agree with the need for hybrid learning so that kids can participate with their peers and with their group, as Tam and Maggie Ty highlighted. I do think that's important. My feeling is more kids would take advantage of that than perhaps my online ALE style model. I would be open to thinking about board meetings in that fashion. So if we wanted to have socially distant board meetings, where some people are present in the boardroom in the, or at the school, or at city council, and we have a Zoom stream going, live stream, interacting with everybody, some remote, some online, especially with the board directors themselves, I would be very open to modeling that behavior and modeling that system so that teachers, parents, and students can see us work. I do agree with Deborah that maybe this requires a level of maturity that might not be present in first graders, but middle, high school, fifth graders, fourth graders? Perhaps so. So I would be super open to that. I think we've got the right streaming technology, the right bandwidth. When we were interviewing superintendent candidates, we did do this as remote interviews with live stream of the entire board, talking to the remote candidate, and it worked out actually very well and very cost-effectively. And it did take a while to get over some technical hiccups, but it does work. Thank you.
And David, thank you for your feedback. I just do, Maggie Ty and I continue to have that conversation as part of agenda planning with Donna and Fred. And just so you know, in terms, Maggie Ty and I met with Donna and Fred on Monday, actually in person with face masks in the district office in a large conference room, the four of us. And frankly, I was miserable being stuck behind a mask. I couldn't see their facial expressions, and I was like, I want to go back to Zoom. So we are continuing to have that conversation, and we'll, we will try everything and any suggestion we are open to considering.
I loved it.
Great being with us.
Did you? I loved it. I thought it was so great, like actually being in the room with people as they're talking. Although, yeah, it would be nice to have a clear face mask.
As you can see on the Zoom, Fred and I are both in our offices, and we actually contemplated yesterday, should we do this in the boardroom? And model, just as Director DeSousa was saying. But frankly, the idea of three hours in our face masks and the concerns right now of the rates of transmission going up, we felt that we were being more prudent by being in our office for this Zoom. So we are contemplating the same, the same concept of, you know, could we do it on the big screen? We did it at the very beginning of the pandemic. We had, I can't remember which board, it was a study session, I believe, where two of us were in the boardroom. We had all of you up on the big screen, and we're working through it that way. So practice does help you get better at that. Completely agree.
Okay, so 9:44, we've been talking a lot about technology and online versions. Does anyone have any questions about another topic?
Real quickly, I guess, could somebody start with in-classroom? And online, the red, yellow, green model? And decide if that's not working for me, I can move to my online?
You can. There are possibilities to do that. And let me give some scenarios into what people would need to do. Some of our online providers, who we have contracts with Fuel Education and some of the others, they have cutoff dates, particularly for middle and high school classes, where similar to kind of any university, you can't, that ad drop time period, there's a, there's kind of a time period for that. There's another company, Edge Annuity, that we're working with that has a little more lenient options for that. And so it would kind of depend on the course that the student wanted to take. For the elementary on the Edge Annuity side and some of the others, it's a little bit more of a rolling admission. The, the, what I would want everyone to know is that, you know, those kinds of transitions are kind of like those transitions in the middle of the school year. Parents tend to move at the end of a school year or right around a mid-winter break. So there are natural breaks for their own child to be able to say goodbye and then meet new classmates. So I think that we have to always think about the students as well, but there are some possibilities with that. The other challenge for us gets back a little bit to Director Janine Upton's point around funding, is if a student is enrolled in one of our classes as kind of the general education program, and then they're going to go to the online piece, again, it's not a guarantee that that will be a cohort of other MI students or with an MI teacher. It could be with a teacher through one of the providers. And that's not different than what we've been doing at the high school. You know, there are times when those aren't necessarily Mercer Island teachers. All of the teachers, however, are Washington State credentialed. They're all certified in whatever content area or grade levels that they're teaching, and they have some background in training in online education. So there's give and takes to everything, but there are possibilities to be able to move around. It's not as easy as just turning it on and off, though, and I would want that to be transparent for families.
And to that point, Director DeSousa, one of the conversations I heard a lot this week among the superintendents who are determining we're going fully online the entire district, many of the questions were around, you know, what's your timeline? How long do you think? And many of them were contemplating grading periods, trimesters, so that the transitions become a little more seamless for everyone involved, students and staff. So to the same point, if you're, you know, transitioning into a hybrid, at what point do you do that, that you're able to do it more seamlessly? I do still strongly feel that we are going to need to be very flexible and have the ability to transition to RED for everyone pretty quickly. Because we never know what could happen and what Department of Health or Public Health is going to, going to say if there's an outbreak that occurs within our schools or within our community that becomes even more dramatic.
I want to, I want to switch topics, if that's okay, because we only have a few minutes left. We know that many of our students engage or, you know, successfully engage a school, not necessarily due to academics, but because of clubs, sports, electives, drama, radio, band, orchestra. How, what thoughts are in place in terms of those types of activities being able to be supported by the schools?
So certainly in the RED model, as you saw on Tuesday when our high school presented, it was by periods. So if a student has an elective period that's banned or drama or any of the other arts or CCR electives, they would still get that class, so to speak, because they're going to get that, that period time in the block schedule twice a week. I believe, I think what I hear you talking about is more about those extracurricular pieces. So sports for sure. Athletics is an extracurricular. Just this week, I shared with the board, it was on Tuesday as well, the WIAA, which is the statewide athletic, high school athletic association, their board made a decision that they were going to change the format. They were going to four short seasons instead of three longer ones. And I don't have Nick Wold here, so if I don't explain this completely correctly, please forgive me. But they've also are changing when sports are going to occur, when the seasons are going to occur. So they've got these one, two, three, four seasons. Normally, we see football in, starting in August with their training and playing their, their season in the fall. That has been switched. Football, as the schedule now is built, would occur in season three, I think, in the spring. Thank you, Brian. And in the fall season are sports that I think a WIAA, when they selected these, felt that they could be sports, athletics that could be participated in safely based on the nature of the sport, cross-country, I believe, is one of them. Although I'm kind of curious about girls softball, and I would defer to you, President Lurie, on that. You're far more of an expert on that than I am, as to how that can practice and play.
Well, there's slow pitch and there's fast pitch. So slow pitch, which some districts have still, is much less contact than fast pitch, which is much more similar to baseball in that sense. So I'm imagining it doesn't make, I wouldn't necessarily have made the same choice, but this is WIAA's purview, and I imagine that's the reason why. And also field space, they have to consider. I could tell that they tried to kind of, you know, pick some, place, play some of them, at least with regards to field space.
Because I think the other important thing is, so that's a statewide organization that's making that determination, but we are in our own league. We are in the Kinko League, and so we would also have to move with Kinko. Many of the schools that we compete with in Kinko League have already announced that they are going to be fully online. So I am curious, and I was the, the voice that questioned that in the meeting when I had several of my colleagues announce that they were going to go fully remote. I didn't get an answer, so it's a question I'm going to continue to be asking, is if you are fully remote, how, how do you have students participate in sports? I struggle with it a little bit, but I'm sure there's some responses to that, and we will work through those as this evolves for us within our Kinko League. Did that?
Yes. It's all, basically what you're saying is we don't know yet, and that's going to continue to be the answer in a lot of.
You know the schedule has changed. We do know we won't have football in the, in the fall, and if we have football, it will be in the spring. So we do know, and if you want to look at the WIAA website, students, to see which things have been scheduled, when that is there, and we will have to comply with that. Whether or not season one and how it's going to look with the sports that are in there, that does have some dependency on, on Kinko. Ty, I know you work with our athletic director and our associate principal in charge of that. Am I missed, are there any parts that you know of that I'm not acknowledging here?
No, I think we got it.
Tam, I saw a question.
Yes. Can I switch back to a question? I do have more academic-related kind of questions. Can I? So.
Can I just ask if any director has any follow-up with the last topic? Maggie Ty?
Just super quick question. What's the current thinking on banned? If, if there's, I mean, I know that no decisions have been made, but what is being looked at, what's being considered?
The, I've been in communication with John McClellan and David Bentley. We've had some communication back and forth. Some of it is largely a facilities, and some of this is a health and safety issue there. I would say there hasn't been any determinations of exactly what it can look like or how it can look like. Obviously, if we are all in a remote setting, we have to start thinking creatively about times outside the day or other options. It's really early to be talking about exactly, or to know exactly what it's going to look like. So that, all of, you know, all of our electives slash performing arts, fine arts, those are all things that we're trying to think creatively about at this point, but nothing firm right now. Wish I had more, Director Tucker, but we just don't at this point.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other hands. So Tam, a new topic?
Thank you. So just going back to the middle school grid or instructional hours, I think that as we are moving forward, we need to better clarify to our community how many instructional hours, like in each topic, our students were getting last year in normal time, and how does it look like for this upcoming year? So I think we need more clarity on that. And tied to that then, do we always offer office hours to students before COVID time? Because now I see that office hours are being placed mostly in the afternoon. And, you know, I understand the purpose of office hours, but then as we're preserving instructional time, as we're really distilling down to the essential, what our students need, I wonder how the office hours are used to really support the differential learning, right? Instead of just being a time the students drop in. Because as time the student drop in may not really fully support all the students, because I know students who need the support are not the one dropping into my office. And within that hour, the most I can serve is like three students. And so as we are giving parents more clarity on how we have been, how we're preserving the instructional time, then I hope that we use the office hours to augment the learning for the whole during this time and not just let be a drop-in, if that is not something that we have done before COVID.
Weston, I see you on the call from the middle school. I know that these were ongoing conversations with the team. Do you want to weigh in on that at this point? Or should we, or do you have something you want to add to that?
Sure. I think that's a great question. And office hours were not something that we offered pre-COVID, to answer that question specifically. But students had the opportunity to drop in for assistance, either during Gator time. They had the opportunity to move to get assistance from a teacher that they needed. That was, that was very self-directed. Or of course, that before and after school time was an option for them. So although it's not a direct comparison, those opportunities were there. I think Mary Jo talked about on Tuesday that that afternoon time in our current model really is being paired with, we, we are doing a lot of work in exploring the flipped learning model. So while it is, I mean, while I think you're referencing the idea that the classroom meetings are occurring in the morning and the afternoon time is what looks like more independent work, it's also more intentional, intentionally designed work, where students recognizing that there's support there for them. So in our current model, we've built in the, both the office hour, which is teacher-directed opportunity, plus parent-supported student-independent work. So our teachers are designing learning activities for when we're together, whether that's through Zoom or in person, in addition to when a student might be working independently, but with support. And also hearing your question, knowing that sometimes the students who need to drop in are not the ones who are dropping in, we definitely recognize that and having ongoing conversations about the opportunity to perhaps direct a student to, you know, make an office hour mandatory or make those check-in opportunities for support required for the student, depending on what our assessments are telling us and what the student needs. So we hear those concerns, and we recognize that that, that learning really needs to be supported during that time, and we're working on ways to continue to do that.
Thank you, Weston. And I love the idea of the flipped learning under guided by a teacher. And I think we just need to be more clear in our communication with parents, because as is currently presented for a lot of parents, it does seem like, you know, afternoon, then it is, you know, done. So it's just a lot more communication on what you guys are planning. Thank you.
Any follow-up related questions? How is attendance working for the remote learning?
So attendance was very different when we first closed the schools, and Superintendent Reichdol, that was statewide, that we were going, even because some of it has to be frankly with a portionment. But we had a lot of conversations around engagement and how to take attendance. And we did work with our staff to do our best to try to track students that weren't engaging in the online model. It will be different in our RED learning if, any, any part of our district that's in RED learning will have daily and/or period attendance. We do have attendance tracking, so it would still go in. Our teachers would be using our student information system, our Skyward. And we do also have an employee who transitioned into the job just as we were going into the closure, who has been working alongside Fred as to what will be the outreach for students who aren't engaging, aren't attending. And certainly, our focus when we were working our attendance model specifically last year, and somewhat the year before, was really on our high school, because that's where we had our concerns and our, our issues that we knew we had to support. Can the attendance model support elementary if they're, if they're not attending? Absolutely. But it becomes then a piece where, just as they do when we are in the building, our administrators work with teachers to track how are, how are students' attendance? Is there an ongoing issue? Is there someone who is, you know, frequently absent, and so it's impacting their learning? So we will absolutely have daily attendance for our elementary, just like we do when we are in the buildings, and the period attendance, like we do in the buildings for our middle and our high school.
Thank you. Fred, are you? No? Okay.
The only thing, you know, I think we are continuing to reflect on and engage in conversations starting now about what was the overall feeling or what was the overall opinion about providing feedback to students about their attendance with regard to kind of that three, two, one standard-based grading, rather than simply saying, yes, you were at the Zoom meeting, or no, you were not. Because there's a difference between that and, you know, truly attending and engaging versus just being present. So there's, I know that Nick Wold and Jeff Jones at the high school are, are leading the subgroup that's going to look at attendance. We talked to the middle school a little bit about that last night. And I know that elementary, now that the, we're kind of settling into a clear picture of what it's going to look like, I think we're going to look at that across the board, so it's not so binary. But we'll see where we go with that. I think what will be fascinating as we go through is attendance in a red versus an orange versus a yellow versus a green is, is going to be fluid. We're going to have to be very adaptable and nimble as we go across. But clarity, we heard from, and Paul, maybe you want to weigh in here, we've heard from our students that we will meet your expectation if it's clear to us of what we need to meet. And that goes from, you know, assignments of where to turn them in. And, and so those systems things are going to be really important. Paul, I don't know if you want to weigh in. Sorry to put you on the spot there.
I'm not seeing or hearing him. So Paul, feel free to jump in anytime you want, if you want.
I had my headphones in. I was, I was away from the thing. Could you repeat the question?
It was really just around the attendance, how we took it in the spring, where it was either or, you attended the Zoom meeting or you didn't, and how to, and hearing loud and clear from students that if you give us clear expectations of how we should be participating, and we know where to find things, then we'll be able to be more participatory and more engaged.
Yeah. I thought, I thought the attendance was pretty, it was okay last semester. I thought that, because we got the, at least at the high school level, students got the emails kind of home, kind of explaining which classes you, you were considered attended at, and that was actually like good feedback for students that weren't as attendant or were attended of whether they were doing a good job and whether they weren't. So I think that was pretty good. I mean, I feel like for the most part, the expectations were a little clear. Sometimes like, it's a little bit teacher to teacher, like whether you have to show up to the meeting or not, or whether, what you're going over in the meeting and what you're doing. But actually, like, that was, I thought the attendance was one of the things I was pretty impressed with, with the original learning model. So, I mean, there's obviously room for improvement, like, but, I mean, I think, I thought we did a good job last time with that.
Thank you. We look forward to hearing more feedback. Maggie Ty, related question?
No, but it's a quick one.
Okay.
It's just, um, I know that there's, there was like a Q and A session that was done with, with some parents of kiddos with special needs, and I'm just wondering if you have, have any idea of when you're going to be able to share more information with families that have questions about how 504s are going to be handled and IEPs and kind of what the process will be like? Because I know I myself learned a lot about my child's learning style this spring, having never watched it so closely before. And so I expect there'll be new IEPs coming through the system, just as they usually do. But when will you be letting people know more about how that will be handled?
So before, before you answer, Maggie Ty is once again reading my mind, because it is 10:06, and I was going to transition us out of this. And in doing so, I was going to ask Donna if you and your team could kind of talk about the next steps and what other information sessions you're going to be doing, because I know that you've got some things planned. And if you could let us know, even if we don't have specific dates, what type of information sessions you're going to be continuing to do, both for staff, students, and parents?
So we do have our website that links from our current MISD website, that is our reopening website, where we're putting as much information as we can and trying to help folks find it in an easy manner. Our meetings, the recordings for the meetings are on there. I'm going to apologize right here and now. We might have missed a little bit of this meeting, as you noted, Entrees is not here. And Fred and I are co-hosts, and we were texting, and I'm not, hopefully we got the most of the recording, but I guarantee you, we didn't get it at the, at the very beginning. So our apologies on that.
We have most of it.
There. We are going to do some Zoom webinar kinds of things, just like the fireside chats. We have some planned for next week. We will start with actually staff. We're going to, you know, we have, we have a large staff, and we know we have lots of staff who've worked on the work groups, but we want to allow those who aren't on the work groups. It is, it is July, and we'll send it via their MISD email for them to just listen in and hear from the leadership team, the different schedules, our different thoughts, all the different safety and health precautions that we'll be putting in place. Then we are going to start, I'm not going to say a series, because I don't know how many, but we will also. I'm not going to say a series because I don't know how many, but we will also do a Zoom webinar that'll be just along that kind of FAQ information piece that we will do for the community as well, where we will have staff there to talk about some of the questions that we've seen, you know, as we transition the buildings, how many students, what are the health and safety precautions that you will have in place? How will attendance happen? How will how will the different schedules happen? So really trying to be as personal in the meetings as we can, rather than just sending the updates, which we will also continue to do. We're working on a message to go out. Today's Thursday, so probably tomorrow, just to update on here's the the conversations we've had with the board. Yes, we acknowledge that several districts around us have announced that they are fully opening in red based on their analysis from public health and also their staffing concerns as well. We anticipate that as this trend doesn't, the transmission rates don't seem to be doing well here in King County and some of the latest information from public health is, you know, that sentence of they they can't imagine how how schools will open with the transmission rates the way they are. We are anticipating that red is very likely. If the board feels that this is the right time to make that as a general announcement, we could do that. But we are going to continue to work on all the details of our reopening plan, which certainly does include the red model. We've now got the template for what that looks like and we'll work through all the rest of the details that we talked, that you asked about and we talked about today. But we need that orange, that hybrid where we need to continue to look at how do we bring students back into our buildings safely in those small numbers that is still best for them, certainly academically, but also the whole child, keeping the students as a priority. All of those important things that we know are what keep our students connected to school. Then the yellow and the green are are somewhat easier because they really are dependent on all of those health and safety requirements. And as important as masks are, I think there is starting to be some concerns of what that's going to look like for for students. I know one of our administrators shared having a conversation with a kindergarten teacher who talked about so much of what and Nova's on, Nova was on the call. But when we're doing things like letters and phonemic awareness and phonics with students, if they cannot see our face, in particular our mouths, it becomes really difficult. And so certainly there are some masks and I've seen them too, that have that clear space. And and we can always talk about that as as an option. But the challenges of teaching and learning in the environment, in the classroom, with all of the the health considerations that we'll have to put in place are starting to burble up. And I think some of it is going to be learning as we go as well.
Are you planning specifically a, some sort of session for IEPs and 504s?
Let me, so from the learning services standpoint, as far as upcoming communication, parents can expect to hear more from learning services about my online and pre-recorded webinar there with with options to follow up with us for questions. And then the other component would be on the special services side. So let me invite Sue Ann and Beth into the conversation because they have been on the phone with neighboring districts and and OSPI. And we've been in communication, talking about all kinds of things. So Beth and Sue Ann.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So we are planning a communication. We have it drafted at the moment. We anticipated going out right after Donna's communication to the district explaining the the big overview. And then we have a special ed or students with disabilities, specific one to come out to follow up for our parents that might have additional questions. We have taken all of the questions off of the special services webinar that happened a couple of weeks ago. We have filtered through all of those. I will say more than half of those questions were not sped specific. They were learning services specific or health specific. So those questions have now gone out to all of the relevant staff. And we are batching, I'm going to call batching this. So our hope is to roll some of those out by tomorrow. And then we'll continue to roll them out and send out communication to families that we've been able to answer another set of questions and that they're on that website with that link. So we're hoping, you know, like I said, not waiting till the end, but to answer what we can as we can. And then some of the answers just may may be, and unfortunately, the landscape is changing, but we are planning for multiple contingencies. And that said, I think one of the things, you know, in special ed specifically, our charge is to provide a continuum of services to students, no matter what environment we're in. And so we are looking at what is that continuum of red? So we might be dark red to light red, but there's a continuum of services that go, that can be available for students, which might include appointments or something else. And so we are looking at what does that take? And so not only do we have to, I don't say continuum, we have to take in what the gen ed population is doing, but we have to layer in a variety of students with disabilities who are either going to be home or partially here or have some very specific needs. And all of that's happening in the background. And the more decisions can be made around gen ed, the faster special ed can then start layering in those additional pieces. Because we are planning for multiple continuums, so some may not happen. So just know there's a lot of work going on in the background.
Great. Thank you. Maggie Ty, did that answer your question?
That was really helpful. I know we're over time. Can I just add one little thing to that, which is?
I will go through.
I do think that the 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 landing page for these updates is really hard to find on the website. I was just looking for it myself and it took me like 10 tries to find it. So it would be great if there was a link on every single page. Because I think as a parent, you know, when you're nervous and you're feeling frustrated to have to poke around and poke around and ask a friend to send you the link to that landing page is extra frustrating. So I really am grateful though for the communication that has come out and for especially how early you guys have been letting the community know some of this stuff so that parents have an opportunity, parents who aren't on the committees have an opportunity to provide feedback. So that's much appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah. So Deborah, I know that the fundamentals are really important. We need to go through them. But can we either extend this time or can we? Because I still have a couple of questions and I think this is a real, really critical time for our administrators to know all of the, you know, things that people are concerned about so that it can help better inform them in their refining of this plan. Either refine it or I have a list I can read off all my questions, however, the board wants to go. So we certainly will be having many more meetings. We schedule up to up to daily, frankly, if we need to, and we'll continue to ask questions. Can I just get a thumbs up or opinion from the board directors and how you want to proceed if you want to continue? I also don't know the availability of many of our staff who's on. So so I know that Donna and Fred will remain with us for sure, but I don't know. I can't guarantee that everyone else has that availability at this point.
It doesn't have to be answered. It's just so that they know.
Oh, no, I understand. So let me just look. Can you guys give me a thumbs up if you want to continue with this conversation? Okay, I'm seeing that. So we will continue. And then we will, again, continue to have study sessions and meetings in public as we will all have new questions every day. So Brian, I see you. I want to let Tam ask one of hers and then I will move to you.
So this is kind of tied to the support that we provide to our students. And so I was curious that during this time, how our school counselors are going to react to next year? Or what services are they going to be providing? And how are they working with the teachers to meet the needs of our students the upcoming year?
Director Din, could I get a little clarification? When you say school counselors, sometimes the community is confused because we have our academic counselors and then we also have our YFS counselors. And while we all view ourselves the staff, there's a distinction there. Is it one or more? Is it either or? Or do you want to know about both?
So that's helpful to clarify that, right? And so I'm both, but more so the YFS counselors.
I exchanged some emails with Derek Franklin. We have a, we have a check-in meeting tentatively scheduled for tomorrow morning. As the board might recall, this is the time of year when we start working and finalizing the interlocal agreement with the city on the YFS counselors. Typically, the first meeting in August for the council is when they approve the interlocal. And then we bring it to you for your second meeting and or your fourth meet, or your, excuse me, your first and or your second meeting in August. Based on what's going on right now, it's my understanding that as recently as the most recent council meeting or it's on the agenda, they're going to be receiving a some funding from from the board, their foundation board, which is going to help bridge the gap and close the gap. I don't have all the details on that, and so I won't speak directly to all that until I've heard from Derek Franklin. But I know that that's going to enhance the staffing for the YFS counselors. I just don't have the details. Perhaps someone else has more information on that.
I do have a scheduled meeting this afternoon with city staff. But I do want to remind that the YFS counselors are not under the purview of the district. They are not our employees. So to the specific question of what are they going to be doing? They will certainly adjust to whatever phase we are in of opening. And again, we don't supervise them, so they did their best during the closure. We did provide them with some technology support so that they could continue with their the families that they were serving. They are housed physically in our buildings and so they are linked to groups of students. But we don't direct their specific work. We certainly have an interlocal that discusses, you know, how much we're going to pay and what the city is going to pay. But the direction of the work does come from YFS, not from the school district. But we could influence and so in the past, it sounds like they've been doing more of the one-on-one counseling. And I think that's needed, but during this time, as we're, if we're mostly home online, I just see that in the past, you know, teachers were holding these, you know, groups and office hours to provide the support. But how can the counselors do more school-wide, you know, be more intentional about doing more preventative group? I hate to cut you off, Director Din, but I do want to remind that, again, they do do some of that work when we're in person and we can certainly have that discussion with Derek Franklin as to here's here's some ideas. But again, we can't, we can't direct it. It has to be based on what they see as the priorities within the community for how they're serving the youth. So we have given them access to technology and we will continue, I imagine, to be able to do that. But to actually direct them into, this is specifically what you need to be doing. We will make them very aware of our schedules and how our schedules are working so that they have access to all of that. But I just want to, and we could certainly express with Derek our concerns for the transition of students from during this pandemic and all the mental health needs that are going to occur. But I I'm really reluctant to to state this is exactly what they're going to be doing because that isn't our role. And I wasn't looking for us to tell them what to do, but I think that we do need to help inform, provide feedback on what our students are experiencing and where they could be a support versus where we put a lot of the mental health support on our teachers, where I saw actually that was happening last last year. And, you know, with a lot of, instead of teachers focusing their time on teaching, they were doing a lot of these SEL groups that may not have been the best use of their time or in their expertise. So I do hope that we have a conversation, that you guys have a conversation with them on to see how together we, their work will seamlessly fit into the new learning model.
And if I could invite Director DeGrace into the conversation too. She's been working through OSPI and some of the networking for social emotional learning with there. So update Beth on on that because I think it kind of bridges this.
Yeah, thank you. So we, I facilitated and convened a group just the other day to begin some conversations around this with OSPI. We are expected to have some things in place at the start of the school year. So we started those conversations. Mercer Island Youth and Family Services is part of that conversation. They bring some great expertise to the table, of course. And so continuing that conversation, hoping tomorrow and thinking about, just give a little download, thinking about what screeners we can use to see how students are showing up in the fall, what that can look like from a continuous check-in. How are we gathering that information to just really be on top of what's going on? And then even further than that, you know, we talked about the office hours and things like that. What does that look like in terms of tier one from a virtual standpoint? And, you know, there's a lot of things that have been in place. So really thinking about what those things are and how we can continue that work, maybe elevate that work and what maybe some needs are moving forward. So there, that is an area focused with with the team doing that work. So.
Thank you. I think it's important to communicate that so parents know where to go to depending on the kind of problems that they're having with their students, whether it's academic, whether it's social, whether it's mental health issues, that parents know directly at what point to engage with the school and who to engage with.
And I think as we have a better sense of the counseling, the totality of the counseling staff available, you know, coming down the homestretch, last year, we were down to two elementary counselors for a total of 28 hours a week. And so what I also want to do is make sure that what we are steering parents towards is a resource that they can actually access with with fidelity and certainty. And so once we have a better idea of what our full complement of resources are, we do agree that that communication piece will be important, will be important. And we've always had a good partnership with MIYFS. That's been a unique aspect of our district and city relationship that, you know, we'll continue with this year.
As to our academic counselors, I know I'd seen some questions around things like, how will we support if we're in red and we're online? How will we support seniors in their? Oh, and Paul has dropped off because he's going to be a senior in their their college application. So our academic counselors will be supporting seniors as they always have. It will just be in this different modality, whether it's setting times when they do counselor of the day. But again, it's in this setting, whether they will be setting up individual meetings with students during, because they'll also be very cognizant of the academic times and the other times that they can meet with with seniors. All of our counselors have a set group of students that they've been working with. They know who specifically their seniors are and will be able to work with each of them individually to work them through that process. So and, you know, the incoming freshmen will have a lot of those individual reach outs as well. It will certainly look different in this setting, but we will have the same amount of counselors at the high school and at the middle school as we have had when we are in person. So they will continue to be there to support students, certainly both academic concerns as well as social emotional concerns.
It is 10:28. We have been going an hour and a half and online, that is challenging. We're going to take a 15-minute break and I'm coming to you, Brian, with your question as soon as we come back. And and we'll keep going, but but Brian, I want you to know that I've not forgotten about you. So we're going to come back at 10:45. Thank you, everyone. See you soon.
That's my 12-week-old puppy who got hit by a softball yesterday and now has a broken wrist and a splint on it for three to four weeks. And it is the saddest, most pathetic thing that I've ever seen in my life and traumatizing to us all.
I am so sorry. Also, I apologize for my dog being all earlier.
No, she can be on the call.
I just, he was just like running around the room, banging his cone against the walls and howling. And I was like, okay, I can't listen to what's going on unless I get him settled down, so I'm going to get down here.
Yes. This one, I don't know how well you guys can see her. She cannot get herself comfortable, but she'll figure it out. Like a stray fly ball or? It was an over, we were out, like, we, she was literally next to us. And she, and she was the unfortunate one that got hit. It was a stray from third to first that was overthrown and like really, really, really hard. It just hairline on one of these, on one of her wrist bones. We do, we know, we do know we need a flexible plan that's going to have to have, be able to pivot when things don't work as well as others. We will continue to have the learning forward work groups work up until we present that draft to the board. Because the board will have to take action on it and there will have to be that resolution that we've talked about before. But certainly something we could sit, we could consider is reconvening as, as we move forward through this. So. Thank you for that. Any follow-up to that question? Any new questions? David, we haven't heard from you in a while. Do you have one? Nope. Tam, I just saw your hand. Go ahead, please.
So I know that right now I support the opening in the red in the fact that next year we need a strong online model regardless of where we're at. We're starting with that so we can shift wherever we need to. But it doesn't seem like the online models, the directions, based on what I hear from OSPI, that it is not tied to really the county's level of how things should be open, right? It is still local control. And so I think that moving forward, we need more clarity and criteria of what would necessitate us to shift from one face, one color face to another. Because you know, if we're assuming that it is public health, it is not really like public health support that we are starting online. But they're not saying that we should. So I think that there's a difference right now. I just feel like the criteria is not clearly defined. And it would be helpful for us to identify what those criterias are as we shift from one face to another.
Brian, do you want to address that with our conversations with the other district? I don't want to put you on the spot if you don't have anything to say, but Brian and I have been participating in meetings with board directors from the east side. And most of our advocacy or discussions have been revolving public health. So Brian, you're far more proficient in that. So do you, do you have anything you want to explain?
Just briefly, the group of five districts on the east side are putting forth a recommendation to public health to be much more direct in that guidance. Providing those FAQs and the specific matrix parameters of what would cause us to shift through the different phases. And we're actually meeting tomorrow morning again with King County and Seattle Public Health to continue those clarifications. As well as I think we plan to have some King County Council members on there as well. So yeah, it's a request that's continuing to go forward from our groups. And I think the superintendents in tandem are doing the same thing. And we're also going to be expanding our group to presidents and legislative representatives from across King County in the coming week or two to get feedback from all of them as well. So now we're, we're definitely working to get clearer guidance on all of that.
Can I have a follow-up, Brian? Does it include also within the district? You know, I know that teachers, right, staffing is always a concern if somebody gets sick and we don't have, you know, the amount, you know, enough to sustain the school, kind of like that. But then is the guidance going to go down to if we have one, six students in the classroom or five or kind of more down at the local level?
That's in the, the set of questions that we're asking as well is specifically what does exposure mean? What is a high-risk exposure? What is a casual exposure? Like really laying out all of that. So if somebody does test positive within the community, within the classroom, what is the matrix of, what are the dominoes that fall in relation to that? And based specifically in science, because what we do is education. We don't do public health. So we need our public health partners to be very clear in their direction and guidance.
And just, just to tag on, one of the frustrations from this group, and I know from educators as a whole, is the lack of directives. It's very much a recommendation process. We actually have a director who's an employee of public, of the King County Department of Public Health, who is a board director in a different district. And she said, you're not going to get that. You're not going to get directives. You're going to get recommendations. So then we need to rely on our administration to be making the decision. And then obviously with board support, making the decisions that keep our students and staff as, as safe as possible. So it is a work in progress and that is one of the huge frustrations is the lack of directive from those organizations so that our employees can plan for the school year ahead.
I would also say too that I'm really grateful for the, the tight-knit group and the collaboration of our superintendents collectively across the county and beyond. Because they really are comparing notes and trying as much as possible to create parity between our districts, which is really incredibly difficult to do with more than 70% of our staff coming from off-island, just snow days, for example, or a late start. The weather may be beautiful on Worcester Island, but if it's unsafe for our teachers and other areas to get, you know, on the roads and get to the schools, then we can't open. And so this, you know, we can relay that to this as well. What happens in the community surrounding us is going to have an impact directly on our environment and how we need to shift within those models.
Any other, thank you. So I think that was helpful. Any follow-up? Maggie, tie.
Sorry, not a follow-up, different question.
Oh, okay. Let me just quick, any follow-up? Okay, Maggie, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'm curious. This is really a question for Fred. What, what is the process going to be for determining whether the district is going to use Google Classroom for the second grade level? Since I realized that teachers would need training in that, so I figure, you know, you'll have to be making decision about it before the start of the year. Do you know yet kind of how you're going to be evaluating it or what, what, what are you considering?
So on Monday, so tomorrow's our last day of summer school. And we have a scheduled meeting for Monday to do a full debrief and kind of an action after action debrief where we take a look at what worked and what didn't, because we were putting a lot of different things into motion. And then from there, we will use that data to move to our technology learning forward team. And then they're going to be taking that information along with the lived experience from the spring to be making those determinations. So I don't have the exact kind of timeline on that. However, it's also a conversation within our professional learning team. So learning services is really working in collaboration with the administrators and teacher teams on that. But that work goes into full motion next week, which is also why we said earlier this week, it was important for us to make a decision about our model for the start of school, because it will allow us to be a little bit more focused and razor sharp about our professional development, rather than trying to plan for three and four different models.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Yep.
Any follow-up for that?
Will, will our professional development be targeted towards online learning that we do at the beginning of the year, just before school starts? Is that, is that what you expect?
Jamie, I think you're still on the call right now. Do you want to just kind of give a preview of that kind of work that we've been doing?
Sure. And as Fred mentioned, it, it is going to depend largely on, on how we open. And so we met as a professional learning forward team, professional learning, learning forward team yesterday. And we're really just waiting for that final determination as to where we're, where we're going to start. Because it will look different if we choose to bring back kindergartners and we have some, some staff who are coming into the buildings. That training is going to look different because teaching is going to look different. And we're no longer, as Donna has mentioned before, going to have circle time. And some of the normal procedures or instructional activities that would normally happen. So we're really trying to figure out, you know, are we all moving towards red and remote? And if so, then yes, PD is going to center largely on whether or not, you know, what, what instruction looks like in a red remote model. And, you know, to Maggie Ty's question about, sorry, Director Tucker's question about Google Classroom, you know, if that is the decision that is made, then absolutely we have some professional development that needs to happen as quickly as possible to get teachers the support and resources they need. So yes, we are planning for, I think at this point, red, remote, online learning. But we're, we're waiting for that final decision.
What's the process for the final decision?
Some of it could come from the board to offer staff that consensus of the red learning is the appropriate space or phase for us to be opening in. Some districts have made that call. And to be honest with you, that's part of their, their reasoning for making that call is we need to start engaging staff in that professional learning that's going to have to occur as we move forward in our remote learning model. So we will still be working through all of the logistics of a flexible plan as to how do we bring students in? When do we start to bring students in? The one and the how. So we would still work with our learning forward groups, particularly in that phase in, which we refer to as orange. And I love the two orange shirts in front of me to remind me about that. So the, that hybrid as to how are students being integrated back into the building? And how are we serving all of their needs based on our priorities of serving the whole child? Would come even more into play with the orange learning phase and the hybrid model that would serve our students there. So it's sort of a roundabout way of saying, you know, if the board does give that consensus, we, we still have to go through the full reopen plan. We have a document we have to complete for OSPI. But we do want to provide more details in our, in our document for the board at that first August 6th meeting. And then work through that timeline as well. But if the board is in agreement of red is where we should be based on the best knowledge that we have at this time, then we would, we would move forward with certainly the work that would need to happen for that. But also the, the communication to our community that that's what we've determined is where we would land. Maggie Ty?
If under, under an all-red reopening, would special needs students be receiving services in person or, or no?
That would be details that would come out later. Tam?
So time to, if we're going to start on the, on the red, and it sounds like, you know, it's going to be maybe a chunk of our learning style next year. In addition to the, the professional development for teachers, I think it would be really important for us to do workshops for our community, like for the parents. You know, like or for my mom, the grandmas who are taking care of the kids, right? On how to go through, you know, how to turn on the computer, how to click on to, just like help, help them understand the flow of the day, right? And where to help their kindergartners, first graders, second graders to access that information. So if we could have a series of workshops, especially for our ELL communities who may not be getting all this information. So that would be really important. And I would say that kind of going back to Deborah, to your earlier comment about how, when I mentioned like the live streaming model, even though I teach at the college level and then the live streaming model may be better for the older students. Actually, well, beside from anything is better than the student-guided learning, right? Is that this model actually allows for childcare workers and people like my mom to, I just be a supervise, right? But then the teacher is guiding the curriculum, but then the childcare worker can just be there to support the students going through their learning. And so then that makes me think about how do we incorporate our community partners, right? All the childcare providers and on the island so that they would also be trained and informed of our structure. And how can they create their, their child, you know, childcare agencies and center to make sure that their students can learn seamlessly while they're there? So just think about incorporating our partners into the work and giving them information as well.
Um, so just to respond to that, if board directors want to give a directive to the superintendent in terms of what we are going to do, that will be a board decision where we will put it on an agenda with notes that action are going to be taking. At this point, my proposal is that we let the, our educational experts do their jobs, make recommendations to the board as they are and have been. And then if we disagree, if any board directors disagree with those decisions, just like we did when the decision was to close school. It was the superintendent's ultimate decision as it is because it's operations. But it, she certainly consulted with the board and advised us. And if anyone had objected, we would have had that discussion in public and asked those, those clarifying questions where the board can certainly, as a whole, provide a directive in terms of a different direction that we want to see the superintendent go ultimately. Well, that's all I need to say about that. So if that ever is the case, then a board director just needs to bring it to my or Maggie Ty's attention so that we can schedule a meeting and place it on the agenda. And that has happened before. So look, for example, when, I think when we closed down, Brian contacted me and said, I want to discuss this. And, and we had a meeting that like within an hour. In fact, I think David rode his bike over because he was out on a bike ride. So, so it's very possible it will happen. It has happened and it will continue to happen. We are as responsive as we can be. The other point I want to make is, is our administration is tremendously busy focusing on educating our students. And obviously that the parent component is a crucial part of that. But, but there's so much bandwidth. I mean, this is a zero-sum game in terms of their time. Certainly not ability, but time to do things. I have already reached out to our PTA council president to discuss how we can partner with the PTA council and how perhaps they could take the lead or at least a large part of providing parent support in the community, because they are the representatives of the parent groups. We are looking at possibly and hopefully, and I have not reached out to them and I'm not tying anyone's hands. But the, my objective at this point is to reach out just as an initial and then bring it to the board's attention. But the YFS Foundation, as well as Schools Foundation, as they are tremendously important community partners in both financial and volunteer support. So that we can provide, we know PTA council provides the parent edge experiences. And, and, and they did, they did adapt and provide several learning sessions and support sessions for parents during the springtime. And I know that they will continue to do that, but we're looking at, I mean, just for example, and none of this is set in stone. These are all very, very initial conversations. But one example is, you know, we have room parents who typically work with the teacher to support and plan parties. Well, our parties are going to look different and support's going to look different. So we might be having, asking our, our room parents to support up, support or to set up some sort of parent mentoring group where they can meet with parents and then be funneling questions to the teacher so that the teacher is able to get that streamlined and not have individual questions from every parent. So that's just one example of all of the things that we are planning and looking at. We, again, open to every idea. Would love to hear suggestions. Please don't ever assume that these things aren't happening because I can guarantee you they are. But we always want to hear other ideas. And, and often I read emails like, oh, that's a great idea. Let's make sure that, you know, at least ask the questions about whether or not it's happening. And just to be honest, typically I've rephrased the way I, when I, when I have my often multiple times a day conversations with our superintendent. It's a, I know you've already done this and had this conversation, but, and it's typically already been discussed and looked at. And is it either in process or there's a substantial reason why it's, you know, veering in one direction or another? So those are, those are wanted, the suggestions are wanted and needed. And, and really relied upon in directing where our administration and leadership team is going for all of these things. But I really want to be able to, we have so many parents out there that are so willing to get, dedicate their time, support and frankly finances to support our students and our schools and we need them and we need them all and we are figuring out the best way as meaningful as possible because we don't want people spinning their wheels and we don't want people doing the same thing. And so, and so we're working on setting up new systems as, as parent support is going to look different than it has been. We're not going to have students or parents going in the classrooms. So parent support's going to have to look different. Maybe we'll do reading times with a different parent online. I mean, those are like, like when parents come in and do book in the bag. So all of these things are being discussed and planned for and we just are, were, it's in process. And Brian with a question.
Can I respond to first to Deborah? No, no, because it's kind of referring to my question in that I thought, you know, and so I, please check me if I am not doing what a board member should be doing or asking. But I really feel that as a board director, this is what we're doing. We're providing feedback where we see there are gaps. And I didn't think it was telling the administration what to do and saying that consider this because this is educating parents. If we have any part that has shifted our responsibility of teaching to parents be more supportive, then it is part of our responsibility to make sure that parents are getting that information because that becomes part of the new learning environment. So, but all of these that I'm bringing up, and like I say, please check me if I'm out of line of how things have been done. But it is really as feedback and suggestion and it is not from the whole, but then we are coming individually as individual board members. So if that comment was directed at me, I'm open for feedback, but I don't see how, or maybe it is my ESL, I'm not phrasing the question right. You know, but it is recognizing that these are gaps in the community and I hope that the administration, regardless of how busy they are, this is part of the work for us to make sure that is, it is going to come out to be a good learning experience for our students. And yeah, I'll stop there.
So, so thank you. First of all, thank you for bringing in the ESL into, I mean, that's an important factor to consider. I would, my suggestion would be phrase things as questions rather than statements. And it is absolutely appropriate to ask, have you considered this? Have you considered how you're going to use parents or parent training? Because I can tell, I mean, most of the questions that I ask, I personally know the answer to because I've had the conversation. And I might, after hearing the answer from the administrator or staff person, might have follow-up questions, but, but for the most part, it's things that they've already discussed and, 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 and have reasons behind. We might not always agree with them, but, but have been, I would say have the initial conversation first to see where the thinking is and assuming that there has been thinking, but like I said, I haven't yet asked a question that hasn't been at least discussed to a degree. And I see, I mean, I make suggestions all the time after having conversations and it's always responded to, always. And so when it's, when it's made as a statement, it's, I think it's confusing for the administration to know whether or not it's a query, a concern or a directive. So if it's asked in a question, even, even a, you know, very specific, have you considered using this particular product, which is totally legitimate, then hearing the answer and then obviously say, giving your feedback in terms of if you have personal experience with something to challenge that feedback, but, but listen to the answer first. I know that a lot of the questions you ask are from parent feedback as, as are the ones I ask. Like I said, the, most of the questions I ask, I already know the answer to. And I'm not asking it to be condescending. It's because community members are asking them, which means they don't know the answer to them. And so it's much better for those answers for me, in my opinion, to come from the administration and from our experts than from me, who isn't necessarily going to give the most complete or robust answer regarding an educational decision. Again, our, our governance model is policy governance. This is something that we can explore about whether or not it's the best model that we want to use, but this is what it is right now. And I would highly persuade us not to do that right now just because of bandwidth. It, that's a, I mean, that, that's a years and years long discussion that they had when they switched, when we switched over to policy governance about 10 years ago. And this is where our superintendent is wholly in charge of operations with, again, influence from the board, where the board sets policy and gives direction. When the board sets priorities and policies, the superintendent then makes operations decisions in accordance with those priorities and policies. She is our one employee, our one employee of the five board directors, and we are all accountable to our community who elects us. If our superintendent is making decisions based on, in operational decisions that the board doesn't believe is in accordance with our policy and priorities, then it's probably not the right fit. And that's a very general statement and not with regards to our current superintendent at all. But it's absolutely appropriate to question these priorities and policies and make sure that the operations decisions are in line with, with the directives that the board has set and with, with what's within our purview. I'm not seeing Brian raise his hand. Are you waiting for me to call on you or, okay. And then Maggie Ty, I see you. So Brian, go ahead.
Um, just building on, Director Din did mention childcare partners in our community. And so since I read it last night, the OSPI news release, the state superintendent laid out four points that districts would need to consider if we went to fully remote learning. And in that, the first one said, work with community partners to identify childcare options for school age students. And you can read the rest. Do you take that, that that's a directive, that's a rule that has been set, or is that a general, these are things they'll have to consider? How do you, how did you interpret that statement?
After consulting with legal counsel, I interpret that as OSPI does not have the authority to give that as a directive. It is not basic ed. Does not mean that we aren't going to talk to our community partners. We already are. We have community partners who do provide a fair amount of our regular childcare. I'm referring to Boys and Girls Club and the JCC. And they are participants in our future school advisory and continue to communicate with them on a regular basis as the status for our reopening and are keeping them in the loop for that. So that is our, our commitment to our, our community partners, which are mainly those two entities of of providing the childcare in our community. But basic ad, the dollars that are provided do not provide for childcare. When we received the directive when we closed, that was from the governor. And we did attempt to do childcare as did many districts and it was wholly a failure in that there isn't provisions within the work that we do to do that. When we, as many districts do, we contract with someone else to provide that kind of before and after school care and with the, the public health recommendations that came down as to how to provide that made it very prohibitive. So I take that as we'll make sure our community partners know what phase we are in.
Sorry, Maggie Ty, go ahead.
I'm, I'm making sure this is raised in the form of a question. I feel like I'm on Jeopardy. Okay. Um, when, when I raised the issue in Tuesday's meeting about whether, raised the question of whether the schools would be able to logistically group kids together in classes based on, you know, pods that their families had formed. Principal Hoffman said that that would be too much extra work for the school to, to manage, but also that he felt like there were some, some equity issues with some parents being able to provide this kind of like extra support and kind of in-person learning environment for kids together and other families not able to do that. And I've been thinking a lot about that this week for my own family as well as for other families in the district. And, and I feel like that is maybe not really, that, that, his answer is correct. There are absolutely some serious equity issues there. But then there's also equity issues going the other direction because there's a real difference, not the, which is not the doing of the school district, but there's a real difference between families where one parent is able to stay at home and, and, you know, and, and help a kid with their, you know, online classwork and keep them, keep them engaged with their, their classmates and their teacher, et cetera. And a, and a family that is struggling with childcare, both parents are working, maybe they're working in healthcare, they have a lot of additional stress on them, you know? And so I'm just wondering what, if anything, the district is thinking about doing to support parents that are forming these kind of informal pods, you know, where they're stay, they're still in the district, their students are staying in the district. Let's say they have like three third graders all getting together in person to take part. Let's say they're in separate classes, but are there policies or are there, you know, is there any kind of parent support that the district can offer to those families since, since, you know, there's, there's the education piece of it and then there's the childcare piece of it. And families are just scrambling right now to, to figure out kind of what's going on, on both fronts.
There is not a policy. Again, I would look to the whole board as to is that the direction you want staff to pursue in coming up with a strategy to provide parents with that. It would take, it would take staff away from some other work as they looked how to do that through our student information system. I turned to President Lurie's comment about, you know, working with PTA and room parents. That has been something that we've always supported in this new environment. It, it's setting up classes in a specific way based on, you know, parents wanting to create germ pods or something else does, does.
Oh yeah, sorry. I'm, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about more like if, if, I have a second grader, if I'm in a pod with two other families and we're not in the same class, um, you know, would it, it, there, could there be like a, a policy of it's okay to do the alternate assignment from another teacher that is on the same topic matter? Like we're studying volcanoes and their class is watching a video on volcano and my kid's class is, is building a, you know, baking soda volcano at home. Could
It would be a teacher by teacher decision.
Okay. Okay. I just, I hate to put that extra burden on the teachers too. It's like they're, they already are having to deal with this very unusual situation and learn all this new technology and then for them to have to be dealing with extra parents and individual clusters, I can see that there will be a lot of headaches involved.
So just to, just to respond to that. So, so as, as Donna said, there's no policy around that. And, you know, if we get to the point as we move through this process that the board feels like isn't providing the support that students need. And it, and it really has to be focused on students because we're the school system, understanding that parents are a vital part, especially for our youngest learners, just as our teachers are and staff are the vital part. We know that they are the most important and impactful piece of our students' education. That we will continue to have these discussions. What I can say, and, and I don't typically like to do this, but, but in, in a whole meeting, but, you know, I've got an incoming ninth grader who isn't necessarily self-motivated and independent. And what I have said to her, would it help if you have a friend who is in a classmate who's in your class? And you guys get together, the two of you to do your online classes together or to do your remote learning together to keep each other on task and motivated. So parents are free to do that. I think it's just what the district is saying is that it just can't be a determining factor for classes. It's just, you know, they, they take, I mean, they spend so much time placing students in classes with a variety of needs, suitability with the teacher, learning styles, how many IEPs there might be in a classroom. There are so many factors that that, I think, just at this point in time would push them over the edge. So my recommend, my recommendation personally, not board, not a board director is to just wait and see where your child is. You know, if you feel like you need to hire someone to help supervise, whether it's a retired teacher or a babysitter or another trusted adult, just wait until your child is placed in the class and find something that works within that is going to be frankly, this, in my opinion, at this point in time, the most efficient way of doing that. So, you know, and every child has different needs. We've got students that are incredibly focused. Frankly, to the point where sometimes their social skills are lacking, but this remote model, they're going to excel. They can sit down and do all of their work. They can get through the day and they're going to excel. And we're seeing that frankly, in like 25 to 30% of the students, or at least we did in the fall, I'm sorry, the spring. And then we've got some students that it's going to be a complete failure and the district will do everything they can to support those needs if they're on IEPs or 504s. As what Dr. Booby said, the, the special, the special education department is going to be layering and putting in supports based on individual needs. And as soon as we are, have a set strategy for learning, then they'll know what supports are going to be needed. I know that they will be meeting with parents regularly and getting, or well, or at least teachers will be meeting with parents regularly and adding supports or taking away supports as needed as we move through this unknown process. So I'm not trying to give any answers. I'm just saying like there, these are all so important and they're very independent student driven.
I just want to say thank you. I think that's actually great advice to parents. And it did ask the question on Tuesday and didn't actually get an answer as far as like what date class assignments would go out. And I don't care what date it is, but it would be great, again, on that landing page that you guys have created once people can find it, to have as many kind of concrete dates as possible because like me as a parent, I'm happy to wait and see who's in my kid's class next year and to reach out to everybody and say, hey, who wants to be in a pod? So I don't go insane and my child doesn't go insane, you know? So, um, thank you for that.
David?
Slightly different, but very related. And I'd, I'd love to know, you know, as a board, we can't make a decision today on whether we go online or not fully. I think we do have to do that in an official board meeting, but I think it would be interesting to at least have, make sure the board has their questions answered that would help us make that decision. And I, I for one, based on the information I am seeing and what's happened in colleges throughout the nation, that, you know, moving to an on, a primary online model is going to be the right thing to do. The second thing I also see is just judging from the questions and the depth of questions we've had and the readiness for our community. There's a great deal of runway needed. And so the quicker this decision is made, the more people can prepare for it. I am especially enthralled by the idea that the education community is increasing. It's not just that teacher and the student in the classroom with the parent, you know, jumps in in the evening and perhaps at the side as well, but now might be a home community, a home pod, third-party providers. So again, when more people are involved, the better it is to have an early decision versus a late decision. So I think if we can extract ourselves from the details of having chosen an online educational model and say, can we move, are we in agreement that we want to move to that, at least thumbs up, thumbs down with the official notice being given at the next board meeting, I think that would be a good place for the board to land. My, my questions right now would be around thinking about that and kind of asking the administration if that's a good place for the board to land. One and two, are you open to questions from board members towards making that decision?
So I think based on the report, and I'm, I'm going to pass it off to Donna in a moment, but based on the report that we've gotten both in the meeting on Tuesday and on today, it, the plan that's being presented to, or, you know, the, the plan in progress that's being presented to the board is for the red online model with options of the my online and, and then with hope of doing more in-person for kindergarten, possibly first grade and students with special needs as long as it is safe and, and possible frankly, based on funding and staff. as long as it is safe and, and possible frankly, based on funding and staff. I see your question. And so my suggestion at this point, and I'm going to go to Brian before we make a decision, is that's the model that we're hearing from our superintendent. So it's basically the online primarily model. Um, and if someone has an objection to that, ask those questions or make that statement so that the administration knows if they're getting directive to pivot. But, but this is absolutely the right time to have that conversation. But that is what we're being presented, um, by Donna. So, um, we can do a thumbs up, but I, I really want to hear if any board director has objections to that. I, she wants to hear if any board director has any objections to where we are right now in the planning, knowing that things are, can and will be modified and changed. Brian, go ahead.
Yeah. Building on, uh, David's question, I, I think we were thinking a lack there. Multiple times superintendent Kloski, you said something along the way, if the board provided consensus to move forward in order. And I was trying to read your poker face to see if it would be helpful if the board went to consensus in that direction.
So the board is going to still have to approve our reopen plan. And our reopen plan is going to have several elements in it. It's going to have a red plan of which we now have the draft schedules that we presented to you. It will have the my online as part of it. It will have the, a hybrid that will be kind of the transition phase into how do we, um, utilize our, our buildings, um, as we're able to. It will have the yellow and the green with, um, more restrictions and then less restrictions at the very end. That timeline for that is posted on the website that I understand is difficult to find. So that people can see that the board will get the first blush of that whole plan. Um, in early August, we have set up, laid, laid out a plan for the approval for that, which hopefully will come at our regular meeting on August 13th, because we actually do have to submit a document to OSPI that, um, also includes the board's resolution for having approved that plan. As we continue to, to build that being fully remote as being identified by many of our surrounding districts, if the board is comfortable with making, saying, that's where we're landing. That's where we need to have the discussion now. We will continue and are dedicated to the work of building that full plan. But to Director Prescott's point earlier with, um, it guides our work when it comes to professional development. It guides our work for, um, how we have to individualize for many of the specific groups. It guides our, um, technology work for sure. Um, and, and our principals' works in their conversation with staff and with, with staffing. We do have to look out to what will a hybrid look like and what will yellow look like, based on the requirements, so that could continue and will continue to impact staffing because we have to be ready to transition. But if we know we're starting with red, that gives us the, um, the pieces to put in place as to all of the things that we could start now. And I, and I want you to know that Jamie has started that. I get many emails from her saying, hey, there's this great opportunity for this kind of online learning. You know, we, we have contract provisions that don't allow us to require it, but she has been sending out all kinds of stuff. And I know she's had many, many teachers who have participated in a variety of online learning experiences that, um, by choice, by their option, wanting to learn more about this. We have lots of technical pieces that we have to give teachers. What are all the pieces in Zoom that they can really utilize effectively? So all of those pieces, we could start to, um, flesh out in much more detail. As long as we know that that's our direction.
Is the expectation this direction would be through Thanksgiving, through, uh, Christmas till the January? Do we have any guidance? Do you, do you have any guidance on that?
We don't, and that is frustrating. I think, um, Director Janine Yatton kind of referenced that, that, um, that is something that everyone is looking for as a metric to say, when is it safe to start to bring folks back?
No, that's, uh, not really when it's safe, but you, you had made the point, uh, when I asked about switching back and forth to an alternative learning experience versus online versus with the school, you know, there, there's some standard transition times, semester, quarter, major vacation. I, 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 I guess I'm looking for that guidance more so than safe or not at the moment, calendar based.
Absolutely. I think it would, we'd have to set up, um, and I, I, to be honest, we haven't been, um, able to think about what is the timeline for the reevaluation of going into the next phase. We would certainly be analyzing it, um, weekly. I know some districts have come out and said, we're doing six weeks, which then becomes a little bit of a, um, a graded segment. Having made that, that complete determination as to what is the best timeline to say, we're going to start and we're going to spend three weeks, four weeks, eight weeks, 10 weeks. Open to, to suggestions on that. Again, we see it as very fluid. I think we would have, I, I feel strongly that, um, we should be looking at it on a three week basis and evaluating that with the boards as to here's what we want to do to start to transition. And building that out so we can give lots of communication to people. But at least doing a reevaluation on a very regular basis as to are we ready to move into the next phase?
My, my feeling would be this is a big organization to, and to change every three weeks is seem, seems difficult.
Yeah, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't say change every three weeks. I would, I say, I would say evaluate at, at the three week mark of are we ready to start transitioning some groups into an orange, into a phase in, into our buildings to provide other, um, services for them. So not necessarily, uh, we're pivoting the entire system, but phase in, um, either particular grades or particular services.
But it, it sounds, it's sounding to me, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's sounding to me like it would be, we would be talking about pretty much the entire fall semester, sort of planning for the entire fall semester. Again, with these, every three weeks reevaluating, you know, whether things have changed and how much they have changed and what would be considered safe now to add in. So that if, if kids are able to go back in person in any capacity, even just for activities or in small groups or whatever, that would be just a pleasant surprise, basically. But that parents should probably expect to be online or all, or student and students should expect to be online for the fall, unless, you know, wonderful things happen. Yeah.
I, I think that's what it's sounding like. Um, so.
I'm hearing that too.
Yes. So, well, and I think, you know, honestly, that we're going to know because we're going to know what's happening with COVID in the community. And as long as it continues to go up, things are not going to change. Unless they get more restrictive. If, you know, as numbers go down, at that point, we'll have those discussions to determine what, what the board believes and what the board and administration believes is safe to, to pivot to. And we can have those, you know, we can schedule them every three weeks. We can have them at the drop of a hat. If something changes and we need to make a decision within an hour, that will happen. I cannot remember, Donna, your answer to Brian about whether or not it would be helpful to have direction. So I guess what I'm looking for from the board is, is anyone concerned with the direction that, that Donna is taking her team at this point with regards to the proposed plans? Okay.
To clarify, this is purely just on the online component, starting with online planning. And then how it will look like, we will, um, approve of that later on.
We, Donna will bring the entire plan with, with many more specifics, but, um, to us that we will approve by August 19th? 19th. Um, there is a tremendous amount of work that needs to happen between now and then, that in terms of planning and will hopefully have many of the answers. And we know, won't have all of the answers as we won't know until things are actually happening. And then they'll be modifying it, um, daily and hourly, uh, as needed. But at this point, it's the models that have been proposed by, um, by Donna and her team, including the learning forward teams. Which again is, um, if anyone wants, does anyone want a summary of those from Donna? Or are we clear on what those are at this point in time? It's, sounds like we're clear. So my question is, is anyone concerned with that direction? Doesn't mean a week from now, as there's more planning, we get another update, that we're not going to have concerns. But at this point, with what we're being presented, I'm not hearing any concerns. And so.
I think, uh, I think, I think just to be, just, just to be clar, clarified. I think the, the guidance the board should be providing would be we're good with the online predominant plan. We'd like that flushed out. Other modes of operation, yellow and green could have, could be TBDs. And we, as a board, we're not looking for deep levels of depth on yellow and green. Maybe red and orange, orange defined as perhaps some kindergartners and first graders can come in as we've talked about. But I think that would be the scope and it seems like even that has a great deal of depth and question around it, that the board would be interested in being more involved in. But lots of clarity around, you know, of many models focus on the red model. Is, is that, and that's what I heard.
I, I think for the most part, that's my understanding. Other than there still is an intent to get the kindergarten, any kindergartner that a parent wants in class, will, the intent is to be in class with, um, appropriate sa, uh, health safeguards, for both students and staff. And, uh, possibly for first graders and for students with special needs. So that is my understanding of the remote model that is being explored right now. Again, if health things change and it's a complete shutdown, then, then, uh, that, as of now, it's, it's a district decision based on OSPI. If the governor makes a declaration as he did in March, then we will abide by that.
Just one other point of clarification, the, the governor may decide that, um, we may not even be allowed to have kindergartners, special ed kids in school. So that's hence my differentiation. All red means nobody's in the school. Orange means we, we allow some kids to come into school and that depends on the plan. Yellow and green, board is not looking for any information on that.
And, and also just to add that it might not be the governor, it might be King County Health, public health also might, might make that determination, right? On a, on a more local.
I think they're going to make, I, from what I'm learning about public health is they're not going to make that directive. They might make the recommendation, but, but a shutdown comes from the governor. Brian?
Yeah. As a point of clarification, and, um, I, I, I really don't know the answer to this. Our resolution for the reopening plan, which we are required by law to present two weeks before opening, does that encompass the need to explain all of the phases? Or is that merely focused on how we plan to re-engage in those initial weeks? So in that resolution, do we need to have the whole package finished? Or in that resolution, do we just need to demonstrate to OSPI how we're opening in those initial weeks?
I know that WASDA has put out the draft of the resolution. Full disclosure, have not had the opportunity to look at it yet. I believe it might be available on their website. I do know that we received a template from OSPI that will be the template document that we will need to submit. It, um, it frankly doesn't ask for the phases. It, it has questions that are very specific around how will we take attendance? How are we counting instructional time? It has some specific questions around, um, lunch. It has specific questions around grading. But it's all very much almost a check the box kind of template that we will need to submit to OSPI for the, the 19th, which doesn't, um, reference, um, online versus hybrid, but it does say, how are you meeting these health requirements? How are you meeting the physical distancing requirements? What are you doing for a health attestation, which is a requirement in the OSPI document? What are you, um, how are you going to, um, ensure face masks and, and, you know, hygiene, um, hand washing is, is being considered? So it, the OSPI template, so to speak, is specific to the reopen schools document that OSPI produced. So it doesn't require us to have a phased plan. That is somewhat self imposed because we, we do, um, know that it's, the, the situation's going to be very, very fluid. And so we have determined that in, in that fluid plan, how do we, how do we say we're fully online? What does that look like? What's that schedule? How is it robust? How will we be doing all of those things? If we can start to transition some students in by virtue of, um, parents who are willing to do that, staff, staffing considerations, what does that look like? And yes, when we can bring students in, how do we comply with all the safety requirements as well?
For clarification, we're really discussing then three very different things. One is how we think we, if we want to provide earlier direction as to how to open, whether in red or, you know, full remote or whatever, that's one thing. The second is the resolution of exactly how that's going to happen to be compliant with the law and OSPI. And then the third is really kind of the general adoption and approval of the overall plan, which is really more localized. So it's three very different things. And so right now, what we're looking for is that first piece of putting on the agenda of the next meeting of the potential of directing to open in red. And then continuing to build towards that resolution as we move closer.
We, Donna.
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's right, Brian. Uh, just real quickly, I, I, I agree with you. I think the other thing to recognize is most of the board input has been around the red online learning mode. And the superintendent and staff have a lot of legal requirements and OSPI directed requirements for the other two, the resolution and, and the other two modes of operation. And so far, I don't think the board has had a large amount of input into that till we see it in August. But I think having, having clarity around the first item on red online will unlock, uh, and enable the board, the, the superintendent to focus.
And so I, I, I agree with all of that. And, um, at this point, so it's July 23rd and, and Donna actually came to Maggie Tye and I and said, it would be appropriate to have this, um, you know, study session where the learning forward, um, activities are being presented to the board for feedback and, you know, and support at this point. August 6th is where the, um, the, Donna and her team will be presenting a much more, uh, robust, um, plan to the board that is in an open public meeting. We, the board has scheduled an August 11th, 11th linkage session, town hall for, to hear, um, feedback and questions from, um, our community, from parents and, and any other community members that want to participate. It's going to obviously be by Zoom. We haven't exactly figured out the best way to do that, whether it's going to be submitting questions ahead of time or if we can bring people live. We'll figure out exactly how that's doing, but please mark your calendar for August 11th. August 13th is a regular board meeting where, um, if, if there's any tweaks based on feedback and, and frankly, every day there's a tweak. So there will be between August 6th and August 13th, and certainly from feedback from families, that, uh, that the board will be looking, if we're.
that, that the board will be looking, if we're ready to approve the plan on August 13th, we can do that. We also have a meeting tentatively scheduled for, well, it's scheduled right now for August 18th, the day before the plan is due, in case we need additional time for Donna to present the final plan, if it's not ready on the 13th, based on feedback that we have and, and are ever changing circumstances. We have that meeting scheduled for August 18th as well. It's important to note that the report that has to, or the plan that has to go to OSPI is not necessarily going to be reviewed. They're just, it, it has to be submitted. So we're not expecting any feedback, frankly, I mean, not that we don't care about their feedback. We want feedback from our community with our specific plan. So that is, so, so people are going to, families are going to know as specifically as possible, when that plan is submitted to OSPI. But they're gonna have much more information than what is only being submitted to OSPI, because as Donna said, it's a very much a check the box type thing, but, but it's gonna be better. What I would say, I know parents have individual concerns and they should, to contact their building administrators or last year's teacher or someone who knows their child, who they can at least just say, I'm concerned about this. This one aspect of, you know, whatever it might be. If they're on an IEP, you know, they're IEP point person. And that way they can hear what your concerns are. It doesn't mean it can be answered right away, but they can at least take those initial concerns into my, keep them in mind when planning. If you're, so, so that is certainly not, we're not discouraging anyone from doing that in terms of if they think their child has a specific need. They can make that clear and I would direct them to go to when I say lowest level, the most direct to your student as possible. We obviously don't know next year's teachers yet, but they know last year's teacher. And assuming that their last year's teacher is coming back, they will, they are, they are in communication and heavily involved in making class assignment decisions. And so they, if you have a concern, bring it up to them, bring it up to their school counselor, academic counselor, if they're in middle or high school, the building principal and, and so on. They will, that is, that is frankly where Donna is going to send information to if it comes straight to the board. So I would, if there's child specific questions and concerns, go to the, the, the most direct person first. Because they're the ones who are gonna be in the best position to make those decision, decisions and answer those questions. Any other topics that people have questions about?
So are we voting right now or are we still having some of the questions kind of? I do just have a follow-up question on what Maggie Tai brought up earlier or a follow-up.
So we're not voting on anything because it's a session, we cannot take action. So, and I didn't hear any concerns raised with the direction that we're being presented right now. So that's where we are right now. We're not making any, we're not taking any action. If you have more questions, go right ahead.
So I was following up with Maggie Tai when you brought up the microschools and pods that people are doing. And so it makes me think of when, when I think of the reasons why parents are having to create their own pods to teach their kids, right? I feel like this is actually a really big problem. And because it means that we are not, as a system, somehow we're not adequate, adequately meeting the needs of all of our students. And so I do want to, as we move forward, what are we doing to address all the inequities? As like Maggie Tai, you brought up, you know, specifically for the classroom placements? You know, that's like a very micro kind of a very, as a detail, right? But I, I do think of the larger, the larger inequities. And so during this time, as we're doing online learning, I do believe it is a lot easier for us to address state equities. And so what, so how are we thinking about this as a board? To make sure that the lens of equities are really infused through how we are making sure that our instructional model is meeting the need of all of our students. And I do believe that is a board issue and how do we make that? You know, moving forward.
Brian?
I, I think in response to that, and I, I wanna preface this by saying, I, I intend this response with all kindness intended. I am absolutely empathetic with families with multiple working parents who are frontline employees, health employees, who are in the delivery chain, who are custodians, maintenance people, working grocery stores. It's incredibly challenging, single parents. It's incredibly challenging to be able to manage your child in a remote setting and, and handle all those other responsibilities. This is a really challenging time. This is the entire purpose of groups like PTAs and PTOs and community groups to provide additional supports around communities through family and community engagement, through different options like that. But what some people are wanting, hearing some people are trying to create and create microschools or whatever, these are not officially schools. They may be hiring and have the privilege and the ability to hire professional staff to support them, but it's childcare and it's geared towards supporting and guiding their children through the, the curriculum. So Mercer Island School District, we can do just about anything we want, but we can't do everything. We could direct the superintendent to provide family and community supports in scaling down and providing pod support for specific groups within the island. We can intentionally do that and create that, but we'll have to pull those resources from somewhere else in the community because there is no additional money. We could ask the community to fund that through one-time donations, but we cannot apply staff to that on an ongoing basis with contracts because it's one-time money. And so we begin digging a hole that we cannot sustain and it has to be about sustainability. So we need to, as a school district, I think, and especially as a board, ensure that what we are providing is providing the best structure and options that we're able to provide for our students. But we can't continue to build these and scale these systems down. Public education is not scaled down and I've been asking this question for a couple of months now. Can, are we gonna scale this down to neighborhood classrooms with one teacher that's serving all the kids in that neighborhood? And it, the model just doesn't, we're not funded that way. That's not how our apportionment works. And so we have to provide within our apportionment and what we're expected to do by law, provide a free and appropriate education to every child. And then how families provide for childcare and everything beyond that? That's a question for our community at large. It's a question for our PTAs and our PTOs and our foundations and all of that of how we're gonna as a community serve them outside of the public education model.
No, I agree, Brian. And I'm not looking for that kind of detail, but I think it would be helpful for the board to understand why parents are feeling the need to organize through microschools. And I, I applaud parents who have the, the, the ability to do it in the, the connection and the resource. And then, so it's nothing negative on them, but there must be something why they feel like they need to do that beyond the childcare. And so then as a board, it does help us to figure out, is that something that we can make standardized through, to, to all of our other students who may not have that resource to engage in these microschools or micropods or whatever. But yeah, I wasn't thinking of how do we scale down? But as a board, maybe reach out to, you know, these folks who are doing this and understand better why they feel that this need to, and it better informs us in our work.
But I, I, I do think with the online educational model, we, we are saying we need a partnership from the remote teacher and the remote students as well as somebody local to the student at home or somewhere else to help. And so we, we, we have said that we need somebody helping students, especially our youngest learners if they're 100% online. And that recognition causes us to also offer the orange model, which allows some of our youngest learners to come into schools. So we're providing that level of support in an equitable way. I think the other expectation would be is for the person at home, what are the educational expectations? As a teacher, what do I expect of the person at home? And that could be, to your point, Tam, multiple times, if it's just supervision and make sure you're watching the screen and interacting and you get the lunch when it's lunchtime, that's great. And I think anybody else could then take that information of what the expectations are and extend it to pod or daycare center or anything else like that. But I don't, I don't know if I'd have to expect the school to partnership yet with those type of providers and, and formalize that. And maybe we can hear and understand if there's an equity disparity occurring because of that. And that probably is, you know, I think people create these pods out of efficiency and cost. It's a cost savings to put three students or five students together than just one. So I, I, I get all that, but I think the expectations on top of the school, I think the orange model is our biggest, biggest expectation for our youngest learners and, and in need students. And I, I commend the school for doing, for certainly doing that, that level. And as a board, if we want to do more, we, we, we should see what the next step is.
It is now 12 o'clock. My phone, my computer just changed. I know that everyone has things going on. We didn't get to our fundamentals at all. Unless someone has a burning question on something that has just been discussed, I'm gonna propose that we bring our study session to a close. The next meeting we have scheduled is August 6th, but I can guarantee you, there will be some in between them then. And we will notify everyone as soon as we have something. In the meantime, the learning forward teams continue to meet. And I would encourage parents to continue to provide feedback, whether it's to the board, to their building staff or to someone they know on a learning forward team. All of those, those avenues are, will, will hopefully achieve the same result that, that your concern is hurt. And I, anything, jump up and down, anyone not seeing anyone moving? Dawn, is there anything you want to close with?
Um, just to say that we are still looking to do a communication so, so our community, community can start to plan. I totally relate to the fact that the reason, one of the reasons among many that some of my colleagues have said we're gonna be fully remote is because they want parents to have the ability to start to plan for that, as well as staff and all those other pieces as well. So Craig has been diligently working on a, a kind of a press release to, to say, here's, here's where we're gonna land. We're still hopeful and we'll still follow all of the health and safety guide, guidance. But we fully anticipate that we will be in a fully remote learning mode come September 2nd.
Could we do a thumbs up from board on that direction? Would that be appropriate, Deborah?
We, we can do that super quick without hearing, I haven't heard concerns, so I don't feel the need, but, but, but it certainly takes two seconds. So, okay, I'm, I'm seeing all five. And, and I would encourage board directors to reach out to me if you have concerns along the way. I can bring them up or decide if we wanna schedule another study session or when to schedule the study session or if there are, and, and primarily if there are concerns regarding what direction things to be heading, things are heading in. If it's just an unknown, we'll get updates as often as, as is appropriate. If you want them sooner, let me know and we can schedule things. But we need to set things, if there's concerns and taking action, we need to schedule those, as you know, in, in a specific way. So we need, so we'd need a little bit more time with our legal requirements for that. This is an incredibly anxious and unknown time for all of us. Our teachers are, are concerned. They want to do the best they can for our kids as, as the rest of our staff. Parents did not sign up for this to be even part-time educators for our students. And so, and students didn't sign up to not be with their peers and their teachers who they have amazing relationships with. So we know that many of these concerns come from these unknown anxieties. And as we get closer and closer, we're gonna have more answers. And hopefully that will help with those anxieties, but we understand them and, and bring your concerns forward and, and we'll do the best we can to address all of those. We have amazing supportive staff. I can't say that enough. And they will do everything in their power to provide the best education possible for our kids. And we are working on setting up supports for families so that, so that, that families can feel, are supported and then can in turn support their students. So it is 12:04 unless there's something else. We will, I'm sure you will hear from us very soon about our next study session, which I'm sure will be at some point next week, but has yet to be maybe. Depends on how things go, right?
Remember, we have two webinars. The staff will be focused on, on Tuesday and Thursday as well.
Okay.
Definitely around those times. It just pushes it away from that late afternoon, evening time into more of a daytime mode.
Got it. So updates and, there'll be updates, just maybe not in the board setting. So next week. So it's 12:05 and I adjourn and we will schedule other things appropriately. So thank you all.